But, Council President, we're here this evening to talk about the 2021 through 2025 CIP, and answer questions Council may have regarding that. First, I guess we'd like to start out with a little bit of an update regarding body-worn cameras, and for that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Peters. If you would go to the next slide, please, Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Windsenz. And as Mr. Windsenz pointed out, you know, we are here tonight to talk about the five-year CIP plan, and, you know, earlier, Council received a more in-depth conversation and presentation on the entire plan. Tonight is the work session for the Council to ask questions and to, and get, you know, because you've had an opportunity now to review it. And as Mr. Windsenz pointed out, and you may recall, over the last month, there's been conversation, considerable conversation, about the body-worn camera program that was in our CIP for the years 2022 and 2023, and interest in having that moved, you know, earlier to 2021. And I will be submitting a revised CIP to move the body-worn program, body-worn camera program up earlier into 2021. You can see from this slide here that the total dollar amount, and, you know, what we spent the last month working on was the cost estimates for, you know, and the feasibility of being able to move the program earlier. As we've talked earlier, this is not simply a body-worn camera program, but it also involves our in-squad videos, it involves our interview rooms, and it involves the electronic storage, and it involves the people involved with managing the electronic storage. So, the, so it does, as we looked at this, it's about $50,000 more on the city share than we had anticipated in the, but that's not terribly unexpected when you're talking about, you know, a project of more than three-quarters of a million dollars, that when we got revised numbers, it went up a little bit. If you look at the next slide, you'll see that the recommendation, in order to keep the CIP smoothed out and even over the years, and to smooth out the amount of debt and also fund balance that be used for the CIP, the recommendation to move the body-worn cameras earlier is also going to involve my recommendation to move a couple of things out a year or two. So primarily, as you can see from this slide, the land acquisition reserve in 2021 would be moving some of that out to 2022. I'd emphasize that none of this is to take the project away or to eliminate any projects, this is just moving them around in terms of, in terms of scheduling. So, some of that land acquisition money would move out to 2022. We have some citywide security expansion, about $25,000 that we would move out. We have an ongoing program to replace the weather warning sirens, and we replace about one a year, and so moving one of those out a year, and then also looking at a utility tractor, and then a roof at the Lakeshore Park Shelter. So, those are, that's the, I guess, you know, when the, when the CIP does come before you next week, it will include those changes in terms of my recommendation to the Council for a five-year CIP. I would note on the next slide that, and this is not a CIP-related issue, but the body-worn cameras do have an operating cost impact, and we will be doing the operating budget later this summer and into the fall. There's about a $98,000 impact to the operating budget. There's about $18,000, a net $18,000 cost for the licensing, but the bigger portion of that is for an additional law enforcement associate. And again, this gets to the personnel that are needed to manage the data, and the open records requests that come with that data, and processing that data. So, we don't know at this point exactly if that'll be a whole year, you know, is that that a dollar amount, that full dollar amount, if that needs to be, you know, starting January 1, or if, you know, because it's going to take some time to actually procure and then implement the systems, that the management support of it might be able to be budgeted for later in the year. But that'll be a conversation in the, in the operating budget. So, that's just the update on the, on the CIP that was submitted to you as recommended, and a revision that I'll be bringing forward with the CIP that should be voting on next week. And I could certainly entertain any questions, or we can turn it back to Jay, who will talk a little bit more in general about the CIP that is before you for your work session tonight.
Councilmember Klinkhammer.
Yes, Mr. Klinkhammer.
At that first slide that you had where it broke down the cost between the city and the county?
Yeah.
Why, why is the city paying two-and-a-half times what the county pays for the storage?
All, all, I mean, so the, it comes down to the volume, and the estimated volume, and the amount of storage, and so, you know, the City of Eau Claire Police Department with 100 sworn officers, you know, compared to the Sheriff's Department, and I don't know exactly how many they have, but it's substantially less than that. So, it's really that the City of Eau Claire is going to take up a lot more of the storage space than the other users in the county. You're welcome.
Councilmember Jeong.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Mr. Peters, I have a quick question. It comes back to the anticipated operating costs. And you know, when we do, my understanding is, this is going to be a one-time fixed cost for the body cameras to acquire the equipment, then there's an ongoing operating cost for the PD of $98,000. Could you, I know that now with the increased conversations of revisiting the budgets for the Eau Claire PD, or just for the PD in general, with the request from the general public in lieu of the national effects from George Floyd incidents, of course, all the emails that we've been getting about defunding the police, I'm assuming that's going to be more so revisiting or visiting the operations, operating budget of the PD. How do you see that being impacted, as we're going to continue to have these conversations?
Sure, and thank you. Good, good question. So, the, I mean, the reality is that, again, the body-worn cameras and just managing the data and the records that are generated take personnel. And, you know, this position is not a sworn position, it's an administrative support position, and they do need to go hand-in-hand. I mean, and, you know, when we implement systems, they take personnel to run and operate, and so, you know, if we do want the body-worn cameras, we have to supply the personnel to be able to properly, you know, manage and operate them. In terms of the other conversations, you know, that will be an ongoing conversation, and certainly one that the Council can engage in, you know, is part of their budget process. And, you know, you know, one of the things that the chief and I have been talking about is this idea of co-response, and, you know, what does that look like long-term, and how do we move forward with some of those concepts of having sworn personnel responding to dangerous situations that are able to de-escalate those situations, and then adequately and properly hand them off to non-sworn individuals to continue, you know, working with that situation. Certainly, that's a model that has been implemented in some places around the country, and one that we're very interested in exploring. Again, that may or may not be a defunding issue, but it's a change in how we, you know, how we respond. And of course, you, you know, we, at the work session last week, you received a lot of data about the funding of the Eau Claire Police Department, and how, you know, generally speaking, you know, compared to most communities of our size, you know, we actually spend less by almost every metric on policing in the City of Eau Claire than many and most communities of our size.
May I ask a follow-up?
Certainly.
Mr. Peters, is there any, does the PD currently have, like, an IT department? I know, like, or the city has an IT department that would have shared responsibilities?
Sure, yeah, so actually, so in the city, we have a centralized IT department. In fact, if you went back many years ago, we actually had separate IT departments, and we had separate servers in different places, and it actually became very challenging to be cost-effective and, you know, and implement systems that could go, you know, across the city, you know, citywide. So, over the years, we have created a centralized IT system and of personnel, and actually, you know, the costs here for the law enforcement associate is not related to the IT support at all. So, actually, the IT support would just be absorbed with the personnel that we already have. And, you know, most of the work from an IT perspective is going to be, you know, front-loaded into the actual implementation, and, you know, getting the hardware and the software set up and running. After it's, you know, up and running, then, you know, it becomes a software that, you know, the department has the, you know, the operating expertise in.
Is there any other?
Now, will we be looking at, for as far as, like, the law enforcement associates, that's something that the city is anticipating as a part-time, full-time employee? Are these, you know, responsibilities able to be shared among office managers or whatnot, other positions within the department?
Sure, so we already have a pool of law enforcement associates at the police department, and so they respond on a regular basis to records requests. So, you know, of the over 30,000 calls that we receive each year, there's a record that's created for most of those calls. Those records have to be managed, and then they have to be updated, and they have to be distributed as a case, you know, moves through the system, or as we receive open records requests for that, you know, for those records. Electronic records carry a heavier workload than a paper record. I mean, so, for example, you know, every record before it's released has to be looked at to see if there's certain information that is, can't be released publicly. So, for example, the names of minors, or, you know, other types of information that by law can't be released. When you have a video record, there's a whole other layer of work that has to be done, fuzzing out certain faces, or taking out certain name tags. So, you actually have to manipulate and change the, you know, the record so that it meets the law to be able to be released. And to answer your question, it's a full-time position, and it would be just another person added to our law associate personnel pool that handles all of our records. And it would be, although there would be, you know, one more person in that pool, I would fully anticipate that there would be several people in the pool that would be trained how to do this, so, you know, it wouldn't be, the expertise is only kept with one individual. It would be spread across several individuals, but we just have to have the capacity to be able to do that work within the work group.
Thank you so much, Mr. Peters.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld. Thank you, Mr. Peters, Mr. Windsenz, and everyone for helping us with working through the CIP work sessions. And I wanted to ask, you know, I think following up from Councilmember Jeong, is we've been seeing a very intense and, I would say, you know, engaged community on our budget this year. I would say more than we probably ever have. In terms of, first of all, just thinking about the body-worn cameras, and how many people have weighed in with us about the importance of that, I know it's both a capital and operating ask for us to implement. But the other thing is really looking at the expenditures in our police department, and thinking about how we can gear ourselves to making sure that we're responding to a community that is looking to be anti-racist, looking to invest in areas of our community that really help, I think, you know, strengthen and bolster a greater community and civic, you know, engagement. And so, I'm asking today about this, our commitment to the, to the high-intensity drug trafficking area, which we're a part of, and I don't know the amount of funding, but I wanted to follow up on this, because looking at the war on drugs is actually one of the things that I think we need to be focused on as a local community. And I guess the question for, for you, Mr. Windsenz, is do we know what amount of money the city contributes to the lab work, and the lab that is connected with the high-intensity drug task force designation?
We can, I'll take that, and I don't, I mean, unless Jay's got that at his fingertips, and I don't think he does, we can certainly get that, and that can be information that we can, you know, bring forward to the future and upcoming budget conversations.
Thanks. I think that would be really helpful, and it's, you know, it's a sort of new territory, thinking about how we respond on the capital budget to, you know, the time, how do I say this, what is being asked of us in our community right now, in terms of, you know, making the changes that we need to make? And we've done this. Our city, our leadership with City Manager Peters, our city council, we've done this kind of thing already, in terms of thinking about how do we respond to our residents, to our community, and I think about our affordable housing work, and really, you know, sort of rising to the moment, and I hope that as we go forward with this budget, we're responding in an equally strong, if not stronger way, to thinking about the reforms that we need to make. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions in regards to the, Councilmember Christopherson?
Thank you, Council President Weld. Mr. Peters, I don't know how to make this a different question, so I'll just boldly ask. I think that in Eau Claire, we have our institutional relationships with County Sheriff's Department, the university, and their security forces, or security officers. And I'm wondering, in those relationships, if there is a strand or a footprint about how, how do our fiscal obligations feed into that? Is, what is the possibility, again, that this drug enforcement money that our sheriff is the head of, how does that impact, or could it impact, the use of our personnel?
Certainly. Good, good question, and I don't know that I have all of the answer there, and I believe the police chief is also on the call, but I'll answer it this way. We have a very high level of intergovernmental cooperation and collaboration in this community. It's evidenced with a combined 911 center, which is one of the first in the country, where we have, you know, so the City of Eau Claire runs and manages the call center for 911, but it dispatches for every emergency response in the entire county. I want to say it's well into the high teens, you know, the number of agencies that get, you know, a response from that. And then that's funded jointly through the county tax levy and the city tax levy, very visibly and apparent, as the sheriff and the police department are in the same physical space. So, when the county building was remodeled, it was very intentional. So, for example, if you go to the detective area of the law enforcement center, the sheriff's detectives are in one area, and the police department's detectives are literally cubicles or offices right across or right next to each other. And the idea and intention of that was to, you know, to be able to create better communication and pathways and coordination, you know, in work that happens, you know, in the entire county between the different agencies. You look at the new forensics lab, relatively new now, I guess it's still, it's relatively new, but that is a, you know, that is a high-end, state-of-the-art forensics lab that is shared by the City of Eau Claire, and the Sheriff's Department, and the City of Altoona, and the Department of Corrections actually has weighed in and participates financially in this, this very sophisticated, you know, computer forensics lab. And so, it's very integrated. Even when you think of our shooting range, the shooting range is a voluntary club, it's on city property, but it's managed by well over a dozen law enforcement agencies that voluntarily go out and work and take care of it and put it together. So, you know, to the extent that one agency is impacted, it impacts the others, because they all work together and rely on each other to be able to, you know, provide, you know, the law enforcement for our, you know, community and region, even though they are technically, you know, within certain jurisdictions, there's a lot of cooperation and collaboration. Chief, I don't know if you're on the line, but if you are, if you have anything you want to add to that response?
He is there. Chief Rokus?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I have my hand raised.
Oh, yep, we can hear you. Good evening.
Okay, thank you. Just a little bit of additional background information to expand on what City Manager Peters mentioned as far as our involvement in kind of regional law enforcement relationships and partnerships. So, there, the, starting with the West Central Drug Task Force, that is a six-county, 19-agency consortium of police agencies that work together as it relates to addressing, you know, the impact of large-scale regional drug trafficking. The Eau Claire County Sheriff's Office is the lead agency for that. A easy, or a good comparison to that is how the Eau Claire Police Department is the lead agency for the regional computer forensic lab. The Sheriff's Department leads the regional drug task force. We are a member agency to that, to that larger consortium, and that has to do a large part because Eau Claire is a regional center for shopping, healthcare, and sometimes these issues related to drug trafficking. The height of designation and how that relates to the regional drug task force, we do not have any definitive answers yet on how that's going to take shape, or what that's going to look like in our region. It can, it can look a number of different ways. We're waiting to learn from the federal government or the U.S. Department of Justice on what that, what that's going to look like. It's a grant that was sought after and applied for by the U.S. Attorney for the Western District of Wisconsin. That individual applied for that grant through the U.S. Department of Justice, and the DEA, and I guess other, I guess other agencies I'm fully familiar with in Washington, D.C., reviewed those designation grant requests, and they did make the determination on that. I don't, do not anticipate that resulting in additional staff, personnel, investigators being assigned to our region or our area, or additional costs being provided to us. What we're being told preliminarily is it's likely to be in the form of some analytical support, and the potential for some reimbursement for wages. But that hasn't been finalized yet. I think we won't know more about that until, by a large part, till the, till the end of the year.
Councilmember Jeong.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief Rokus, and Mr. Peters. Now, you know, I'm sorry if you, you mentioned it already, I didn't catch it, but, so, in regards to having, you know, shared services or shared cost with the 911 dispatch center, and then with, you know, our other collaborative efforts with the county, is this, is there a possibility that this could be also a collaborative effort when it comes to maintaining, you know, video evidence and things like that? I say that because I'm just curious, because I know that, you know, of course, every, every, we want, if we had enough money, we want everything, right? We want to have the law enforcement associate for this. We also want, you know, to have a community liaison within the PD that does, you know, outreach to marginalized communities, or navigate the PD, being able to do that. So, I'm just curious, because I know there's a high demand in that, so that would mean a possibility of requesting two persons, and that also means that there's an increase in overhead in that. So, I'm just trying to figure out how, if possible, what other options we have to be, to be able to meet those needs.
Sure.
Yes.
No, go ahead, Chief.
Okay. Yes, I certainly understand those concerns and those considerations. I believe backing up a slide or two where it shows the breakdown of the cost-share agreement, that does in large part address, I think, mostly the storage capabilities and kind of our agreement to manage, manage that information, or the physical structures that are required for the storage, but not the individual, I guess, the personnel costs associated with managing the information, where City Manager Peters was talking about releasing, redacting, editing the camera footage before it's released. We kind of have the primary responsibility for that within our department. And then notably, on that, on that slide there in the center column where it talks about county, we're, we're, we have it tentatively scheduled or proposed to pursue body cameras. The Sheriff's Department are partners at the county, do not. They're, I guess, they're focusing more on maintaining or moving forward with the in-squad video and interview rooms, technology advancements, where we're, as a city police department, looking at more that holistic approach of the squad video, interview rooms, body-worn cameras. But we still retain that, we have that higher volume level, and then also have the prospect of body-worn cameras, which is going to exponentially grow the storage and management requirements. So, we certainly can take a further look at that and try to do that, but there's some distinct differences between our operations and kind of what the Sheriff's Department is, and the county is looking at providing.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I know, I mean, it's a growing need, and I expressed it before, that if we could achieve everything, we would definitely do that, but we do, I do want to make sure that we're looking at the overall request that we've been having, because we do need to have the capacity to continue to service this city.
Certainly, and I should have offered it earlier. I certainly can circle back and have a follow-up conversation and discussion on exactly where, you know, if there are additional opportunities to share that service.
Any other questions from Council? Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld. Thank you to all the staff that have been working on this, particularly Mr. Windsenz, working on the CIP. I was, I guess I was wondering, I know that, you know, some information was shared in the city manager's update, and also some information has been shared with Transit Commissioners I serve on about the CARES Act, and how that's impacting the transit budget in positive ways, even given the lack of ridership that we have needed to reduce because of the virus. But I guess I was... I was, you know, along the same lines of, of us receiving a revised CIP from, from City Manager Peters to reflect the body worn cameras, I was wondering if there's any changes that would be in the transit portion of the CIP that would be beneficial to be reflected in a revised CIP as a result of the CARES Act funding?
If, if I could, and we can figure out how we want to do this, the, we wanted to just to put out there the, this revision on the body worn cameras, and Jay had then a couple of other over kind of remarks to the overall CIP, and then we were going to go through it fund by fund. But Jay, perhaps you could, perhaps you could just respond to that, that bigger question about, because, you know, there's, there's transit CARES funding, there's other CARES funding, but how, how we plan to, I guess, integrate that funding into, you know, the, the CIP and/or the budget process?
That's great.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager Peters. So in looking through the CIP projects that were planned to be funded for the transit system, I don't see any of these projects that would be funded with the CARES Act dollars versus what we would be funding locally. Our plan right now, from a capital standpoint, is to fund the, basically the driver protection areas to, to create some separation between the driver and passengers as well as a different fare system so that passengers can board the bus both from the front and the rear without having to use, use the fare box. So it's really a, really a paperless fare system where they can, you know, purchase their fares using their, using their smartphones or online, be able to access the buses that way. Neither of those projects were, were included within the CIP, and I believe the capital dollars on the federal side have to be used for COVID-related capital projects for the transit system. And I don't think any of the projects within this CIP would be, we would categorize as, as COVID-related. So like I said, I think the two projects that we're planning to use the CARES dollars for are not, were not included as part of this CIP.
And if I could build on that, in part because we're, we're moving forward with those in 2020, and this is the 2021 through 25 CIP. So, I mean, we're using that money directly today. It might not all get built out, but, but, you know, we're, all of that, that spending is being committed and moving forward into the 2020 expenditures to get the buses so that they are safer for the drivers and the pedestrians in, in the current year.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Listen, so you, you said that we're going to be going through each fund today?
Yes.
Okay, we have a bit of time left in this. I'll, I'll, thank you.
Okay. Then unless there's any other questions on the, on the body worn cameras and the revised CIP, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Winsens for just a couple of brief overview remarks on the CIP itself. And then the thought was we would just, we would go to each fund. He'll briefly touch on a couple of highlights, and then it's open to questions and comments or feedback that council may have. So Jay, off to you.
Sounds good. Thank you, City Manager Peters. Kathy, if you want to, oh, you did already. Thank you. Read my mind. So just, we, we did go through this in the, in the last presentation, but again, just from a high level, just a couple of things that I want to reiterate is that in 2021, so the projects that are proposed for 2021, use about $3 million in fund balance, or we would be withdrawing about $3 million from our savings account in order to partially fund those projects and reduce the amount of debt that we need to issue in order to pay for them. Even using the $3 million in fund balance, we would still require about $9.5 million in new borrowing. Increases our debt service in 2022 by about $331,000 or 3.7%, and would cost the owner of a $174,000 house approximately $11 per year. So those would be the, the impacts of the 2021 project on, on taxpayers in, in 2022. Next one, Kathy? And this was a slide I also included, and I just, again, want to continue to reiterate. Throughout the five years of this CIP, for projects that are funded from the general fund that are non-transportation related, so no, you know, bridges or streets, those projects total $26.7 million. The total amount of non-transportation related projects that were proposed to be funded by the general fund that we have to defer from this CIP or push into future years beyond 2025, total of $41.5 million. And again, my point in, in raising this is just to, to, you know, make sure that the city council knows that we have some pretty substantial capital expenditures beyond the five years of this CIP that we're going to need to, need to fund. And, you know, we'll certainly figure out how to do that, but it is a, it is a substantial amount, largely being driven by the need to replace downtown parking structures, need to replace, need to replace a fire station, as well as many other very important projects. But those do, do come with a pretty, a pretty steep price tag. But next slide, Kathy? So here we are, July 14th. This is our, our work session to go through the CIP. At this point, we've, we've scheduled the public discussion and planning for that to occur on July 27th. And then city council action is scheduled to occur at the meeting on July 28th. So that's the, that's the schedule that we're planning to follow at this point. So if we want to turn our attention to the CIP itself, for those who want to flip through the book, if we jump to page 13, these are the projects that are included in our, in our water utility. Just want to highlight just a couple of projects here. One of those pretty substantial projects is a, a water generator, or a, really a generator to be able to meet our, our water needs in the event of a power outage. This totals $2.75 million. Very expensive project, a very big generator. I would say that one of the things that the city manager and I have been working on with the university as part of the son intake project is basically working with XL Energy to look at establishing a, a microgrid and using a combination of solar and battery power in order to meet some of the backup needs for the proposed son intake center. I think that when, when it comes time to begin moving forward with that project, that's a concept that I would like to try to take and apply to the, the wastewater, or the water treatment facility as well, to see if there's any way that we could incorporate some of those concepts into, into backup electrical facilities at the, at the water treatment plant. Just below that project is the solar electric project. This has been in the CIP for at least a year now. There's a little bit over $1 million to equip the water treatment facility with, with solar panels. Moving a little bit further down, we've got emergency battery backup system. And then also continuing with our lead service replacement program. So it is our expectation that, that at some point, the funding from the state of Wisconsin will run out for the replacement of the lead services. And this is, starts the process of providing local funds to continue with that lead service replacement program. And I believe we discussed this with the city council several months back, that this was going to be the city manager's recommendation that when those funds run out, that we, we fund it locally since it is a public health matter. Jumping ahead to page 22, this is our sewer utility, our wastewater treatment facility. Really nothing on this page that I want to, that I want to highlight. It, it is really just maintenance and, you know, repair of existing equipment and, and facilities to keep those running and in top-notch condition so that we continue to receive an A-plus report card from the DNR when we come forward with our, with our annual reports. Jumping ahead to page 29, this is our stormwater utility. Just really one project here that I want to, that I want to highlight, and that is the levee reconstruction. We've got $1.1 million budgeted. This is to reconstruct the levee north of Madison Street and to make sure that it is a properly engineered levee and will continue to protect the city of Beauclaire when, when the Chippewa River rises in the, in the future. Okay, gonna jump ahead now to page...
Jay, Jay, this is Dale. Why don't we just take a minute? Those were, those were the three funds that have water in them. So they're kind of related and, and they're all in one bucket, pardon the pun. And so let's just take, take a moment and see if there are any questions or comments or, you know, feedback that, that council members had on any of those three funds.
Any questions from council in regards to the...
Water, sewer and stormwater.
Councilmember Worthman.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Is, is there a potential of getting some FEMA or other pre-disaster mitigation funds or something from the feds to help with the, with some of the cost on the, on the levee?
I'm not aware of any particular programs, but I think that that's a great idea and something we should, we should certainly take a look at. So we'll, looks like Mr. Solberg just raised a hand there as well. So maybe Dave has some, some information he could provide for us.
Yeah, because there are some things we've been exploring. Dave, you want to expand on those?
Sure. There is a, the DNR, the Wisconsin DNR have a 50/50 flood protection grant that we used this year to buy some duckbill valve, some, some, we put up our storm sewers to help for the, the Chippewa flooding into the storm sewer backwards. And the, the levee is one that would be eligible for 50/50 grant. And we're also doing a study on it right now just to see what's in there. And the consultant that we're using also is familiar with FEMA funds that they're going to help us identify other grants that we can possibly use for that.
Thanks, yeah. That's, that's helpful. And actually that, if I remember that flood reduction, there's a lot of communities that are applying for that. So our chances might be kind of slim to get, to get that, but it's just something to think of in, in out-years as we're gearing up to, to do that project.
Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld. The, my question is related to the levee reconstruction along Forest Street is, is, I think that's the location. The, so the intent is to, to basically allow for it to protect against a 100-year flood. I guess one thing that concerns me is that a 100-year flood may not, may end up being the 20-year flood. So I guess I'm kind of wondering if there's ways to, to have it be even more effective, like 200-year flood or 500-year flood or whatever. Obviously, all the other, you know, protections would have to be in place for that to even matter, but I guess I'm just wondering about how we can increase our standards, you know, maybe beyond the, the minimum here. Not sure if we know much about that, but I just thought I'd raise it.
Sure. Dave, you want to weigh in on that?
Just real briefly, there are, there are several options that we'll be presenting to the city council. One is to bring the levee up to a height that would practically protect against a 100-year event, and it's fairly close to that level now, but it wouldn't offer the protection and the assurance from the properties behind it to get reduced flood insurance rates. But the next option will be to bring in the levee up to a level that would guarantee that the area behind it would have reduced flood insurance rates, and it would assure that. And that levee has to be two or four feet above the 100-year flood elevation to be certified by FEMA, and that would be in the neighborhood of protecting it at the 500-year event. So we would, we would have very good protection for that. And then there are some other options that we'll be bringing forward also. So it is being considered, but the higher it goes, the higher the cost, and that'll be something that the city council at the time will have to weigh in.
Yeah, thank you. Is there, just as a follow-up, Mr. Solberg, thank you for that. Does the cost of this include amenities, like if there was a trail or lighting or benches or things like that on top of a levee, or is it really just the cost of the levee itself?
It's the, the cost of the levee, and with the levee, there come restrictions also, what, what can be put on it, what can be put near it as far as trees and features that would promote, you know, rodents, for example, to burrow into it. So it wouldn't be an enhancement, you know, like for a trail grant, but we do have programs with the DNR that we work with that could help with the trail on the, on the top. As far as lighting, that would probably be a city cost. But the, the main part of the cost for it with the engineered levee would be something that would be eligible for, and that, the rest of it would be relatively minor in cost comparison.
Yeah, I guess there's another follow-up. Are there some other areas of the city that we're looking at levees, or is this really the only one in the, in the next five, 10 years?
This is the only one in the next five to 10 years. There are other areas that could possibly benefit, but there are properties, private properties that bore the river. So it would involve building a levee on private property, and it's, it has a whole host of issues that would go with it. So this, this is the first one that I could see reasonably being done in the next five to 10 years, and then that would have to be a discussion down the road to see what appetite the, the city council at that time would have towards furthering the flood protection effort.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in regards to the three water funds? I don't see any.
Okay, then if we want to jump ahead, like I said, to page 34, this is our parking improvement fund and a couple of projects to, to highlight in here. First of all, you can see out in 2025, we've got funding provided, $850,000 for routine maintenance to the Galloway parking structure. So even though that, that's a relatively new structure, we need to be continually performing maintenance on it in order for it to continue to be in good repair. So funding is provided out in 2025 to be doing that. And also, funding is included in 2021 for repairs to the Riverside parking deck. Beyond the scope of this CIP, we will be looking at replacement of the Riverside parking deck as well as replacement of the, of the Gibson ramp. And both of And both of those are going to involve major capital expenditures, but those are beyond the scope of this of this current CIP. And both of those projects were projects that were submitted but were were deferred. Jumping ahead to page 39, public transit. Again, a couple of projects I want to highlight here. The first of those is the transit bus stop shelters. That's been a priority of the city council, and funding for that continues in 2021 through 2023 to be erecting those structures. We also are including funding in 2020, 2021 for electric charging infrastructure. So this is really the first step in starting to move towards an electric an electric bus fleet. So that's that's followed up then in 2025 with transit replacement buses. So in 2025, we're budgeting $2.2 million. And that would provide for two electric buses to replace two of our diesel, clean diesel buses. So that would be the first those the first electric buses that we are planning to to bring into the fleet. And the last project here that I want to hit on is the UW Eau Claire Transit Hub. So this provides a hub or really a center for for UWEC students to be able to board the bus on campus and be able to access the Eau Claire transit system. Jump ahead to page 44 and then maybe take some more questions. This is the Hobbs Municipal Ice Center. Not many projects for Hobbs included within this CIP. Just want to hit the the last project that's listed there, which is the Hobbs Refrigeration System and Flooring. There's $300,000 included in 2025 for this project. This is really just for design and planning associated with the refrigeration system and flooring. And the actual construction was was deferred from the five years of this CIP out into the future. It's something that needs to be done and is a is a high priority. The existing system is is really ending, reaching the end of its useful life. It needs to be replaced, but again, simply couldn't be accommodated within within this this CIP. The other project that we've talked about at Hobbs and has been included in in CIPs from time to time has been an expansion of the facility, looking at at perhaps bringing in a semi-pro hockey franchise into Eau Claire. That would require some expansions to the facility, some additional locker rooms, coaches' office. But once again, the funding just simply is not available at this point in time in order to be able to to accomplish that. So with that, let's just take a pause there and see if there are any questions on any of those three funds.
Any questions from council? I don't see any, Jay.
Okay, excellent. Page 48 is Fairfax Municipal Pool. Nothing in particular here to highlight for the city council. Many of the most of these projects you've seen in in prior CIPs and really nothing nothing particularly out of the ordinary. We are planning to do a diving board replacement in 2022 and waterslide replacement in 2023. But those are those are the really the big projects included in this CIP for Fairfax Pool. Jumping ahead to page 54, this is our central equipment fund. So we have a central equipment fund, and that fund repairs and maintains all of the vehicles in our in our fleet. And and they the central equipment gets all their all their funds from the other operating budgets of the city. So each operating budget pays to central equipment either an hourly or a monthly fee for for the use of the equipment that's owned by central equipment. This is a system that Eau Claire put in place a number of years ago and really helps really helps balance out the operating budgets of the various divisions and departments because you don't you don't have those budgets going up and down to to replace pieces of equipment. Within this budget, as I said, we've got the we've got the vehicle replacements. And, you know, that that ranges, you know, every year, depending upon which particular vehicles need to be replaced. Should point out with that that a couple of years ago, we went away from a system of just replacing vehicles based upon the number of years that we've had them and really now use the number of years as a guide, but also are evaluating the condition of each piece of equipment, you know, as it starts approaching that that timeframe. So there may be some pieces of equipment that we have that, you know, may have a normal life expectancy of eight years, but for one reason or another, need to be replaced at year six. And we just we got a bad piece of equipment for some reason, and and it has abnormally high repair history. On the other hand, we may have a piece of equipment that's that's eight years old, and it's it's been a great piece of equipment, and there's no reason not to keep that for another couple of years. So we're continually evaluating our equipment based upon their maintenance costs and making decisions about replacement in that manner, rather than just based upon a number of miles or or that we've owned that piece of equipment for a certain amount of time. Also, our central equipment facility, again, just like many of our facilities, is getting older and and requires annual maintenance and upkeep in order to keep it in good condition. So this is another, you know, in total, pretty significant item within this CIP, totaling $2.5 million over the five years of this CIP. But that's really just to maintain the that facility and and the equipment and other things within it that are used to maintain our equipment. Jumping ahead to page 61, excuse me. Didn't get my page marked here. So 59 is our environmental improvements fund. So this is where we include capital dollars to maintain the city our city-owned landfill on the west, the western outskirts of of Eau Claire. So this is a landfill that we owned and operated for quite a number of years, and there are various responsible parties that we have have an agreement with, and we each contribute funds in order to maintain that facility up to the standards that were required to maintain it. Page 62 is our land building and equipment fund. So there are many, many projects within this fund. This is probably the the largest single fund in terms of capital projects. Just a couple of projects that I want to highlight. We have our investments in renewable energy. So this CIP provides $2.1 million for investments in renewable energy. Starts out at $300,000 in 2021 and then ramps up to $500,000 in 2024 and 2025. This is the fund where the is the budget for participatory budgeting, and we've included $100,000 per year, a total of $500,000 over the course of the CIP. We also, now that we've finished the remodeling of City Hall, we need to take a look at what we're calling our east wing in the CIP, which is really the the area below the below the fire station, and look at making some enhancements into that area of the building as well. Going a little bit further down the list, a couple of significant projects, radio communication equipment. So some council members may recall that we spent a fair amount of money not too long ago on the radio on the radio system and going to the narrowbanding. But believe it or not, it's that much of that equipment is going to be starting to reach the end of its useful life in the later years of this CIP. And a total of $1.8 million is included for the radio communication equipment. We also included in 2021 the need to replace the portable radios that are used by the police department. And then also in 2021, we need to make some enhancements to the countywide communication system. And then last, the final project at the bottom of this list is the replacement of Fire Station Number Two. So the $800,000 is planned in 2025. It's really to start the planning and design process for potential replacement of Fire Station Number Two. During the course of doing our our siting analysis for Station Number 10, I think one of the things that really jumped out to me was that we have some fairly significant response time deficits on the west, western portion of our community. And, you know, we're seeing some new residential developments, some higher density residential development occurring on the the western edge of our our community. And this is an area that I think, in my opinion, we should be we should be looking at looking at addressing. One of the ways to do that would be to relocate Station Number Two to the west side of the river in the area of the Cannery redevelopment area. I'm not suggesting that it be in the redevelopment area, but in that in that general area. That gives us still gives us good response time back into the downtown and the near east sides, but also improves the response time significantly to the west and the northwest portions of our community. So that is a project that that we've included to begin the process in 2025. And then it would be the construction would be funded in in the out years of this CIP somewhere between 2025 and in 2023. So I'm going to stop there again and see if there are any questions on any of those funds that we just went through quickly.
Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Winston. I'm wondering if you or Mr. Peters could speak about the participatory budgeting or Mr. Allen, I saw that he was on at least earlier. You know, when we think about doing anti-racist work, I think this is one of our key strategies that we have, especially as it comes to the CIP. And I'm wondering if you can speak to any of the efforts that you see going forward to really engage sectors of our community who have been historically left out of the conversation.
Sure, I can take that one. Thank you. Good question. And actually, we have some communication we're putting together to the council on that for for later this week. Mr. Allen and his team have been doing a lot of outreach on the participatory budgeting and how best to go forward with it, particularly in in light of COVID. And as we have talked to other communities, particularly those that have a lot of experience in it, and our consultants, they have advised that we not try to start that right now, that to be able to get the the community engagement that would make it successful is very, very challenging in the current COVID time. So we're we're fully prepared to go forward. You can see in the CIP that that money is there and has not been been moved and and will be available. But at this time, we're we're reevaluating kind of that timing and that annual schedule that that we had hoped to be on. And we just really have to wait and see where where COVID kind of goes and allows for us to be able to organize and energize and, you know, and bring people to the table for that for that conversation. So it's queued up. The manual is is there. But but the advice that we're receiving is that this would would it would be very, very challenging to be successful starting it right now. And in fact, most of the programs that that we're aware of actually have put their programs on hold. So even established programs are on hold right now, and and starting one would be particularly challenging. So we're we're ready to go, and we're revaliding the timeframes and and just waiting for for the opportunity to 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 be able to do it without the, I guess, the cloud of COVID hanging over it.
So just so I understand, we have that money in the budget for this current year, correct?
Yes, there's, I believe, $100,000 in the current CIP for participatory budgeting.
And? Okay, that's helpful.
So and, you know, I would expect that if we proceed in the manner that City Manager Peters has suggested, that we would request that those funds be be carried over into 2021. So that would mean that in in 2021, we would potentially have $200,000 to allocate as opposed to the $100,000, you know, the hundreds shown in this CIP would be new money, and we would be able to use that the prior budgeted funds as well.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Kristofferson.
Thank you, Council President Weld. This sounds like not even a question question, but let's let's say that because of the interest in anti-racism and maybe community partners, if if they were to have some project that just happens to come up because of magic, would that and if it qualified in some way, could some of this money be made available to that?
We would have to look at that. I mean, I mean, it's there, right?
Yeah.
For participatory budgeting.
So maybe, maybe.
Participatory budgeting is a is a program. I mean, there's a there's a system to that, to the extent that there was, you know, something else that came up that was, you know, closely related, then, you know, we could have those kind of conversations.
Right. So I guess actually, just again, I'm not trying to, who cares what I'm trying to do. But if it has that model of an organic need that is generated from the public, it's possible that this money could be made available.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, that would, you know, certainly be a decision for the city council to make. But the other piece to keep in mind is that these are capital dollars as opposed to to operating dollars. So they would need to, you know, meet that definition of what a what a capital project is.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's what I was thinking. I mean, it would, again, it would be magical, but even if the program had not started, but by some fluke, we had this thing that looked like participatory budgeting, and it just happened coincidentally, we could we could make a decision then.
That that's a conversation the council could certainly have, yes. That, that's a conversation the council could certainly have, yes.
Councilmember McGregor.
Thank you, President Weld. I wanted to go, go off of this discussion on participatory budgeting a bit, and obviously that's, can be a big conversation. But as it relates to the CIP, um, and maybe in particular with the potential for the first year being $200,000 versus $100,000, I was wondering if where we're at with the program envision some sort of attempt to have the $100,000 or city, whatever the city money is, be, in a sense, seed money for a larger project or like a match for whatever is envisioned by the community and with hopes that there be a way to use this, the participatory nature of this and the energy around this as a way to, to raise additional funds. So essentially, is there a vision for, you know, leveraging this money, you know, for private donations, uh, to match it or something like that?
That's certainly a possibility, and that's certainly one of the, um, you know, the techniques that might come out of the participatory budgeting is, is the concept of, hey, how do you leverage it, you know, for more? Um, Scott, if you're online, do you want to, uh, weigh in on that at all?
Ah, hello, can you hear me?
Yep, a little echoey bit, yes.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm having some audio issues here. Um, but yeah, it's just real briefly, uh, with the participatory budgeting, it certainly has, uh, a possibility, um, moving forward. I'd be of that set point in, kind of developing, uh, you know, certainly projects or potential projects either. Uh, but as, uh, as Jay was mentioning, it's really focused again, capital dollars. Uh, it is really the, the focus here. Uh, I should also add that, um, Sister Pen and Ben Noel and I were working with, uh, either the E C, uh, class, actually, uh, in the spring semester, working through, uh, some, uh, marketing promotions, these nations, uh, almost like branding and logos for the participatory budgeting within, uh, in public debt. And I'm trying to do that, that even that process online, uh, working with the students and with the professor and, and that, that too, essentially, the wall installed out a bit. So, uh, again, even just looking with, uh, the branding side, I think we are having some struggles, struggles getting that moving. So, uh, through the process, that's kind of where we are. As, uh, as, uh, Dale mentioned, we are, um, certainly moving along with, uh, kind of the workbook or the, kind of the, the plan or strategy moving forward, as to be the calendar, uh, at this point has been pushed. But, uh, in terms of projects, yeah, uh, certainly very much wide open at this point.
Thank you, Scott.
Uh, Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I just wanted to follow up on this conversation and also what Councilmember Christopherson said is just, I think us being creative and flexible and thinking about, you know, what we can do. Obviously, capital dollars are, you know, by their, by their nature, not ongoing. So if there were some expenditure that came up, it wouldn't be a long-term expenditure. Um, so it's, it's something to keep in mind. But I think it's worth us having that conversation and being open to what our community is looking for right now. Um, and maybe we can be responsive, um, in that way, too. So I'm not saying that we shouldn't just push those funds off into 2021. Um, but that, we should or we shouldn't, but I think we should just remain open to kind of listening to what, what comes forward.
So Councilmember Worthman, so they are, they're in the 2020, uh, capital expenditure and, and, um, as Mr. Winston pointed out, if we get to the end of the year and they have not been spent, um, it would be our recommendation to carry them forward and have them available in 2021 at that time.
But isn't, wouldn't there be an option to also do a budget amendment if they're not, if we don't think they're gonna be extended this year?
I'm not following your question. They're, they're available now.
Just that, just that we could, just that we, it's available now, but if we wanted to reallocate it to something else this year?
Um, yeah, I mean, that, that, that would, that would be an action that the council could do.
Thanks.
Yep.
Councilmember Jean.
Thank you, Council President. Um, Mr. Peters and, and Mr. Allen, if you could answer. Uh, it sounds like, when we, are we referring, I guess, I need some, I'm just looking for some clarity as I'm new with this. Um, is with the CIP, the Capital Improvement Fund, um, if we were to look at it as a seed money, um, I'm gonna use an example of my thought, like a little thought process here. Um, as we are focusing on, uh, affordable housing, um, and getting folks to be homeowners. So, you know, we have a revolving loan fund for businesses. Um, is there a possibility to allocating some of the capital funds as a seed, um, money for, um, a revolving loan fund for, um, let's say, down payment assistance for homeownership, um, which would be then paid back, would be loans made out and paid back to the city, uh, for encouragement to homeownership? And at some point, be paid back again to the city if, if not? I'm using the example of WIDA, how the state had allocated some money to start that, um, for the loan fund, um, at a later date being paid back after, and successfully, um, monitoring a new program, if you would?
Yep, so, yep, certainly. So last year, um, the CIP process put a half million dollars in the 2020 capital, uh, budget for, uh, affordable housing. Uh, actually, staff is, uh, working on a, on a, on a project to bring forward to council on that. But, but one of, one of the options, uh, certainly to, to use that, that funding for portable housing would be, uh, to establish some type of a, uh, like a revolving loan program like you're talking about. Jay, do you have anything you want to add and, or build on that?
No, other than to apologize for not mentioning that project because I should have highlighted that one. It's in this fund as well. Uh, and that is, uh, that, uh, there is, uh, $50,000, uh, included in this CIP in 2022, and then an additional $500,000 included in 2024, uh, for, uh, additional funding for investments in affordable housing. So, um, you know, the types of programs that, that you described, Meyer, you know, would, would absolutely be a, uh, potential use, um, of those, of those dollars. Um, one of the other things that we have, um, going right now is, uh, that, that happened before you were on City Council, Maya, is, um, we purchased some land, um, out on the, uh, north side of Eau Claire that we're in the process of, uh, of, um, surveying into, uh, smaller lots for, uh, development of, uh, affordable, single-family homes. So, um, one of the, you know, one of the goals was for us to be able to acquire that property at a reasonable cost and, and subdivide it into smaller lots to, to drive the land cost, um, down. And then we're planning to work with, um, area developers to, uh, construct, um, single-family and potentially, um, twin, uh, affordable twin homes on those lots, um, and then, uh, sell them to, um, to home buyers, uh, at, uh, at, uh, reasonable cost. So, um, just a couple of things that, that we were currently doing, um, in that regard.
Thank you. Yeah, no, and I, I bring that up because I was made aware, uh, this morning that, um, at some point in time, we had the home grant from HUD and we no longer have it, uh, over the last four or five years. Um, so I'm really, I'd be really interested to seeing, um, some of that money go towards, um, a revolving loan fund for capital access to becoming homeownership. So it, it could help families obtain homes, um, and encourage folks to move to Eau Claire. Um, is there a possibility of moving that forward? I, and here they, you mentioned that we do have $50,000 for 2020, not 2021, 2022 and 2024. But is there a possibility of having that moved forward? Um, you know, and move us trying to, to battle the housing affordability?
Sure. So last year, uh, there was money moved forward, yeah, already in the CIP. And one of the things we do want to be careful with the CIP is that we keep it balanced and that we don't, you know, front-load it, uh, you know, so much that it, it, because, you know, the current year is the year that, uh, that you're, you're, you're levying the debt portion of it, and there's only so much, um, uh, of fund balance that can be brought forward. So as Jay pointed out, you know, this year, uh, or this next year, we're anticipating about $3 million, but it's usually about between $2.5 and $3 million that can be brought forward. The rest of it is borrowed money. Um, so we, we want to be careful that we don't front-load too much. Uh, but certainly, that's a conversation about, you know, um, if we move something forward, my suggestion would be that, you know, something else get, get moved back, um, again, to have that balance. The, the other place would be, I mean, there is the half million dollars in 2020. As I said, there's a, a, a very exciting project that, that staff has been working on. It had a setback, uh, again, because of, of COVID. And it seems like COVID has slowed a lot of things down. Um, and actually, we'll be learning this week, hopefully, uh, about that. And if, if that project, uh, does not become viable, then, you know, we'll be looking at other ideas for how to best use that, uh, that money that was setified for affordable housing. And certainly, a loan fund would be, uh, one of those ideas that could certainly be, uh, be brought forward for application with that money.
Okay, and then I do, um, uh, I do have a last question. As far as, as we purchased that property in north of Eau Claire to, to looking at building, um, has, has the city ever considered or looked into, um, tiny homes to really encounter our homeless population? I know that that's been, um, kind of a project or a program that has sparked throughout, um, the nation of like cities taking the lead in, um, maybe creating tiny homes, um, you know, with folks nowadays downsizing and they don't have as narrowly large of family as they used to, that it might be as, um, more cost-effective.
Sure.
To, to that population.
Yep, good, good question, good conversation. Um, and actually, I was talking on Monday, uh, getting connected with a developer who, uh, that is something that that developer might be, might be interested, but also is interested in. And, and the project that Jay talked about, uh, up on Andy Lane, um, I don't know that those homes would, would meet what the definition of people think of as a tiny home because generally that, the, you know, at least as I understand that concept, it's, it's not a home that's actually anchored down. Um, it, it could be moved. Uh, but the idea of these, uh, this subdivision, uh, up off of Andy Lane is to have homes that are smaller and more modest, but then, and also built, uh, by, um, by, by developers. And, you know, the, the one we were talking about today is, uh, or, or earlier this week, it would be, you know, more of, um, uh, a, a not-for-profit model to, uh, you know, to create more housing stock at that, at that lower end. So that, that's certainly part of that. And again, I don't know that, I mean, that wouldn't fit the definition of, of perhaps the tiny home, but certainly that Andy Lane project is smaller homes that are modest. And the idea is to be able to get people at that lower income, um, scale into homeownership and be able to earn that, that equity that, uh, and, and wealth that can, can, uh, help families for generations then further on.
Yeah, just picking up on that a little bit more, Dale. Yeah, I mean, the, the concept of the vision for the Andy Lane area is really almost like a more traditional, older neighborhood where you've got smaller, uh, two-story homes on relatively small lots. Um, so, you know, maybe you're talking 900, 1100 to 1100 square feet, something like that, like that. Um, uh, you know, two stories, uh, smaller lot will tend to make those homes, uh, a little bit more affordable and still afford the, uh, the property owners, um, the ability to, to, uh, have their properties appreciate in value and, uh, and build up that equity and that wealth. I think that's one of the issues with tiny homes is I don't think you really see that same kind of, um, uh, ability to, to, uh, build wealth and equity, uh, in that project because they, they tend to be a little bit more, um, a little less permanent in nature, uh, than a, than a traditional home. But I know, uh, Mr. Allen has also done some, some research on, on tiny homes and has been having, uh, discussions as well. So I'm not sure if there's anything else you wanted to add, Scott?
Um, yeah, we, we felt a little bit to say that, uh, a number of the, you know, infill, the development areas that we've focused on, another example would be, uh, Canary District. And with that, um, you know, and, uh, tried to identify some, some space in there, uh, for, uh, almost kind of like a, you know, it's a lack of, I don't know, a courtyard style, uh, development where you see a number of more homes clustered together, uh, with shared space, outdoor space, and, uh, sort of. So we, we've had some preliminary visits from developers and that type of thing of somebody, uh, newer and growing districts, uh, but, uh, nothing specifically targeted. As, uh, Jay and Dale, Dale were saying with the Andy Lane project, uh, that actually spurred off of the, the old flat that was, uh, up in place there decades ago, which had very small lots, a lot more traditional. So kind of playing off of that, uh, design concept, as, as we were saying here. So, uh, for tiny homes, I know City Chapel Hall has, uh, a very basic tiny homes ordinance. It's more focused on some other, um, religious facilities that are utilizing some of their space, personally temporary housing or, uh, like a transitional housing, if you're saying, not a incriminating concept. But, uh, there's certainly some zoning opportunities to look at moving forward, uh, you know, to help with the, the housing situation. That's, you know, certainly one of those, um, of, uh, strategies of the housing opportunities, which we'll be looking at here moving forward as well.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Christopherson.
Thank you, President Weld. I just want to ask a question, uh, along with Maya's conversation. Seems like CDBG funds have been used for homeownership in the past, or maybe still they are at this time, available for eligible homeowners. Is that correct?
Scott, can you respond to the status of that?
Uh, yeah, it's picking up, it's kind of a, uh, you know, of budgeting for CDBG facilities forward. Are there still, uh, homeownerships funding available? Uh, even specifically target that for the, I mean, uh, funding cycle? People are, they're just carrying forward some, some of those funds from previous years. So, uh, maybe for looking into the CPG, you know, budget and such, maybe a little bit, uh, completing some of those facilities not funding, you know, homeownership, it's simply not funding of the $40,000 really moves those dollars forward, so. Uh, but yeah, I understand that it's a lot more, um, all inclusive. It's a, you know, purchasing all, and rehabilitating them and then, uh, you know, turn those over to, to homeowners rather than a specific, you know, down payment assistance program such. So what I was, uh, participating in that, uh, high this year for those funds. But those two are some, you know, they're a small pot of funds there. So those are kind of two approaches of, of taking, kind of rehabilitation, uh, purchase rehabilitation of, of homes, turn those over to, you know, homeowners and then down payment assistance. So, uh, they're still there in, you know, very modest action, but, uh, um, it certainly is opportunity to, to look at that again.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, Councilmember Worthman. All right, are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? I don't see any, Jay.
Okay. We will jump ahead to page 79 now. This is our transportation fund. And again, just highlighting a couple of projects about in the middle of the page, there's the Citywide or CW Trail Program. This is involves the construction of new pedestrian trails within the community. So in 2021, we've got a total of $1 million planned. If you look on page 82, there's a description there of the different trails that are planned by year. So for 2021, we're planning the Rod and Gun to Carson Park Trail, the Half Moon Trail and the Chippewa River Trail from the Phoenix Park Bridge to West Grand Avenue and a trail from Phoenix Park Bridge to Oxford Avenue. So those projects are planned for 2021 within that within that program. Then we've got a couple of major street projects. We've got Fairfax Street and Jeffers Road, both scheduled in in 2021. And then the last project on this list is a project that's been somewhat fluid in nature, although that's probably not a very good word for a train, but I guess it's still on the tracks for 2022 and 2023. And this would provide a great separated crossing on on Galloway Street near Vanbury Place. And this is a project that that I know Mr. Solberg has been working on and in conversations with the railroad about. Our hope is that a good chunk of that project cost will be funded by the railroad and not by the local local property taxpayer. We jump ahead now to page 86. This is our Park and Recreation Fund. Just again, a couple of projects to highlight in here. The funding is included for improvements to the Northwest Community Park in 2022. Carson Park Restroom in that same year. We've got the relocation of Roosevelt Park planned for planning in 2023 and construction in 2024. And as we've talked about in the past with the city council, this will, you know, be a be a process, a planning process that will actively involve the neighbors adjoining and immediately in the vicinity of this park to determine what particular amenities and developments occur in this area. And then last on this list is the development of Princeton Valley Park and $350,000 is included in 2025 for that particular project. And I think I'm going to stop there because I see a council member has raised their hand.
Councilmember Bergy.
Uh, thanks. I was wondering about the railroad, the non-fluid project, which is fluid. I just update on the quiet zones for the north side through that. I have people that are asking, so is there an update on that?
Yeah, that would be in Dave Solberg's area. I'm not sure, looks like he's still on. I'm not sure if he's listening or not. But Dave, can you take that one?
Um, let's see here. Can you can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. I got a little bit, my my computer's plugged in, but I got a little battery symbol on here, so I don't know, I don't know what's going on. But so this, so this summer, I'll talk fast, the Eddie Lane, Melby Street are going to be going as well as Star Road. The railroad is making those improvements. We haven't started Eddie Lane and Melby because they, the railroad hasn't given us the permission to put our utilities underneath there yet, but we're hoping to do that this year. So that will establish those three. We started talking with the railroad, an initial discussion, a reinitial discussion after they had a staff shakeup over that prior to COVID, and we haven't progressed those since since March or so. So three of the crossings on the northwest, north-south leg will have by the by the end of this year, quiet zone approved safety features on them.
Thanks, David. Councilmember Bergy, did you have a follow-up? Ern?
I couldn't hear what you just said.
I just asked if you had a follow-up question.
Oh, um, well, yeah, I guess just so three out of, I think it was like the seven stops. Sounds like that's good. And just want to make sure, I know we moved in the CIP money to fund other safety improvements for the quiet zones a couple of years ago. I just want to make sure that that's still intact because the blurb in the CIP booklet didn't specifically mention that. So I just want to make sure that that money is still available to make any necessary improvements if needed, if the if the railroad doesn't follow through.
Um, non-recurring funds like those would be at three years to expend the money for that. So it wouldn't be like our every year, our recurring funds where there's one year, one year to spend it. So money would be available if it's in a non-recurring fund.
And and that would have been a non-recurring project. So we've got three years to to expend those those funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Gregor. Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld. Just a question for Mr. Solberg about the Citywide Trail Program. Obviously, you know, each of those throughout the next five years is somewhat up in the air in terms of what year they would happen or. But I guess I have two questions about that. Like if we got like, if we didn't get any grant funding, would we be able to fund all of those still? Is that, are we essentially budgeting to be able to fund them? Or are we pretty dependent on upon like the Transportation Alternatives Program, for example, to to fund the Half Moon Lake Trail, which I'm hoping we hear about soon, because I'm not sure if you have any updates for us. But but I guess my general question is about the about the possibility of them still occurring without grant funding. And then I had a specific question about the 2023 Chippewa River Trail rehabilitation and what exactly that means in terms of what section of the trail you're talking about there.
Um, so the $1 million for this coming year with the, and I apologize, I don't have the budget, the budget sheet right in front of me, includes money. We spend like with a TAP program, we spend the money, then we ask for reimbursement. So we would be spending that money, that $1 million would be spent among the three, the three projects that Jay had listed. Say $600,000 of that would be the Half Moon Trail. And then the TAP funding would reimburse us for up to 80% of that if we were granted. If that doesn't, if we don't get the TAP grants, then we would be looking at not doing that trail and or if the TAP funds aren't available next year, like there's a good chance they may not, then we would look at doing it in a future year and not spend that money. So that.
Jay, if you want to.
Yeah. Councilmember Gregor, be happy to to provide you additional follow-up information on those questions since since we lost lost Dave, if that's okay with you.
Sure. So you don't know specifically about what section of the Chippewa River Trail would be rehabilitated?
No, no, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't. I can probably answer the funding funding questions, but I've got to, I've got to dig dig through some files in order to get to the to the sheets that are specific to these projects.
Fine. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Any other questions in regards to the two chapters? I don't see any, Jay.
Okay. Then we're going to jump ahead to page 95 and should be done very, very shortly. These last three funds are all tax incremental districts. TID number nine is located, this is the Gateway Area on the on the northern side of the community. In 2021, we've included $4 million to acquire additional industrial land. So we are currently in the process of of working, working towards this. And really, these land acquisitions will hopefully ensure the availability of industrial land in the community for the foreseeable future. So we're very hopeful that this will put us in a in a very good position to be able to compete for economic development projects in the in the future. On page 98 is tax incremental district number 12. This is the Water Street District. And many of these projects that we had anticipated when the project plan was adopted have had to, we've had to push them back because development, some development has not occurred at the pace that we had anticipated. But we're planning at this point in 2025 to complete the trail improvements. This would be the rehabilitation reconstruction of the trail along the along the Chippewa River, behind the businesses, along Water Street and to the to the west as well. And then construction of an expanded parking lot within that within that district as well. This would be an expansion of the existing city-owned parking lot that's kind of behind the businesses that are located, what would it be, on the north side of Water Street. And then the last fund is tax incremental district number 13, and this is on page 101. We've got, this is the Canary Redevelopment Area. So we've got included in this district or in this plan, the park development of the park in this district, a total of $3.4 million for this project, excuse me, $3.8 million with $400,000 included in 2021, and then $1.5 million in 2022, and $1.9 million in 2023. And then also within this district, we'll be funding street improvements. And that's included in 2021 with a little bit over $1.5 million in in funding for really a reconstruction of Oxford Avenue and several of the cross streets as well, including intersection improvements. So that completes my quick review of the CIP. And I know all of you are pushing pushing five hours of of work this afternoon and this evening, but I'd be happy to to answer questions and talk about next steps.
Councilmember Bergy.
Thank you. And I missed, I have, I have, I have to go backwards just a bit. Sorry about that. But then I have to pull up. I was wondering about the north side of the park. I have to pull up that. On page 86, it says $27,000 in 2021. And then in the blurb with that, it talks about things I feel like that have already been done. I'm wondering what that $27,000 is going towards? They can't seem to figure it out by reading the justification. And I'm wondering if it's going towards, I know we talked about public space cameras for the park to cut down vandalism. So, because I know the neighborhood association has been asking for that.
Yeah.
Just clarifications.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's going for, Councilmember Bergy, is the security upgrades, the public space cameras.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Zhang.
Thank you, Councilmember. I am so sorry, Mr. Windsor, I'm going to go back to page two. And just as you mentioned, I just skimmed through the numbers that you were talking and made about in regards to the investment that we were going to put into the affordable housing. And maybe Mr. Peters can answer this too. But I see that, so it sounds like the 50,000 is what we, in 2022 is what we're going to use for, let's say, a revolving loan fund for that. And then the 500,000 is for the purpose of the building or of the north side project? Is that correct?
No. The, the, if you're talking about the north side project, if we're referring to to Andy, the Andy Lane project, no, that, you know, the construction of the streets and the public infrastructure within that area are going to be completed as part of the Citywide Streets Program that is budgeted in the Transportation Fund every year. And then the plan is is not for the city to actually construct the homes, but for the city to work with private developers to have those those homes constructed. And we would, we being the city, would basically develop a list of specifications that those, kind of general specifications that those homes would need to meet, you know, of a certain size. We would also put affordability restrictions on, on the, as deed restrictions on the land so that, you know, allow the allow the homeowners to make some profit or or generate some equity in their homes, but also, you know, restrict future home sales values because we want those homes to continue to remain affordable for for future potential homeowners. But so there isn't any capital money in in the budget to construct the homes because we believe that that there will be private home builders that would be willing to undertake that activity. So the $500,000 that's included in 2028, 2024 for affordable housing, that doesn't have any specific commitments on it at this point. There aren't any specific plans for the use of those funds.
Okay. So I guess then my follow-up question is, what are the possibilities of splitting that 500,000 up over the the course of the five year to to working on specific projects? Like, because we know 50,000 for a revolving loan fund, it would probably not be sufficient as we want year-over-year production, if you would, or loans? I'm just curious how how that, because I see that, let's say, in the participatory budgeting, the 500,000 is split up over the course of five years. And here it's affordable housing where we've got like a 50,000 here and then we've got 500,000 somewhere. Is there a possibility of doing 50,000 in 2021, 50,000 in 2022, and so on? Then the lump sum at the end?
You know, that's, I think that, you know, that's certainly a possibility. I think some of it gets back to what Mr. Peters was talking about earlier about balancing out the years of the the years of the CIP. So moving funding forward may mean that we need to, you know, reduce funding for some other projects within those within those particular years. I think there's really a broader discussion here and 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 Maya would be happy to have it with you because in in my former life, I ran the housing programs for the for another city within the state of Wisconsin. And we had a whole suite. And we had a whole suite of homeownership programs, including doubt payment and closing cost and housing rehab programs, and, and, you know, funded those in, in some different ways. So, you know, I would be happy to, to sit down and, not, I guess with COVID, not sit down, but have a conversation with you about some of those programs because I think that, you know, when we put $500,000 in here for 2024, it, it wasn't with the, with the notion that, that was going to definitively be used for a housing, for a homeownership program or doubt payment or closing costs, but rather that when we got to that point in time, we would decide what type of program we wanted to use those, those funds for. Because it could be that there's, you know, some large development at that point in time that, that $500,000 might be used for. There may be some other type of priority in the community at that time, but certainly be happy to have that, have that discussion with you about some of the different programs I've seen implemented.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Windsor, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Worthman.
Thank you, Council President. And I wanted to ask you and other members of the council if there's a willingness and wish to respond to the request that we have had from a number of community leaders to specifically have a conversation around our capital improvement plan and our policing budget, and specifically making sure that we have leaders in Black Lives Matters and our communities of color that are at the table giving input on this budget. I think I'd be open to do a specific conversation like that, potentially next week, but wanted to see if the council had an interest in thinking a little differently about how to open up a conversation like that.
Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld, and thank you, Councilmember Worthman, for that. I mean, I'd certainly be willing to work on that as well. You know, it, it could be something together with Plan Commission as well. I know we have, I believe Plan Commission will be meeting soon, and we could maybe discuss it too, since it was, you know, an idea that came through at Plan Commission. So, so it's something we can certainly discuss as too. And I, I know that Councilmember Christoffersen was on Plan Commission too, so we could try to figure something out. You know, even, even if we, we don't necessarily have, I mean, it would be great, I think, if the whole council could be involved with it, I guess is, would be my preference, but be curious as to what others think about what would be the best model.
Council Vice President Emmanuel.
Thank you, Council President. I'm, of course, very supportive of our recent commitments and efforts that our organization wants to do on anti-racist work. And I wonder about if our manager or finance director might be able to suggest a timeline? I think that us adopting this, you know, basically two weeks is a snug turnaround. And wondering, since it is a plan and council is not adopting really 2021 CIP year until the fall, if there is a belief that there may be a little bit more time than trying to respectfully cram something in in, you know, less than two weeks. I realize if something were to change in 2021, it would potentially impact other years of the CIP. And just wondering, thinking about how can we have meaningful conversations without having to rush it through, just to not convince that in two weeks we'd have a meaningful conversation? That's gonna be helpful for everybody.
A couple of thoughts. So the, the CIP several years ago was moved back to this timeframe so that once it was approved, it would help with the planning process and the bidding process. And, you know, we could get, we, we knew which projects in 2021 would be, you know, had been approved, so we could get working on those. And it helped with, helped us get our bidding documents out earlier so we got better pricing and, and could get a better jump on the construction season in the spring. So, so you have that, but, you know, you know, this date or, you know, is, is not locked in, or, I mean, that's just a conceptual change that was made to, to help us be more, more cost efficient. So with that, yes, a revised timeline could, could certainly be, be proposed. The other, I guess, thought process or, or thing to consider is there's, there's a tremendous amount of energy and time that's going into forming the broader conversation about where we want to go with anti-racism. And certainly, community involvement and, and more involvement by our communities of color has to be part of that conversation. And so one of my asks for you is where, where do you want the energy spent? You know, if, if, you know, putting, putting energy into this broader, community-wide conversation and inviting people into that table and into that conversation, there's a, there's a lot of work that, that is going into and, and certainly will be going into that, and, and a lot of engagement on it. Time and effort that's spent on, you know, the CIP is, you know, in the big scheme of things, is a relatively smaller aspect of, of that engagement. But if we front-load that time and energy now, that's time and energy that's taken away from, you know, getting this bigger effort going and, you know, utilizing the energy in the conversation that's happening around, you know, policing and education and, and medicine, or, you know, and, and healthcare, and really getting that well-structured and, and well-energized and, and moving forward. So, you know, there, there's a limit to, to the capacity, and I think my ask would be, let's be intentional about really where, where do we want that energy to be spent? And, and where does it get the best, the best return?
May I ask a follow-up?
Certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peters, for that. And I think we're on the same page. I, I absolutely support that, and I think it's an incredible opportunity for us to get the CIP passed in two weeks because that's a key to cost savings and big cost savings, could be over a million dollars, and that's money that we can use certainly in important places in our city's CIP budget. One thing I'm, I guess what I was thinking about is, since we're, you know, we would be adopting a plan, the CIP is a plan, then we wouldn't actually be adopting the 2021 CIP until the fall. So I'm wondering, is there opportunity for perhaps a more meaningful conversation for the 2021 CIP year to occur sometime between now and the end of the fall, which is a longer time period than now and two weeks?
Sure. So perhaps a, a, a thought on that. You know, there, there's a lot that, a, a lot that's going into this, this broader, you know, communication and, and, I guess, task force or, you know, work, this, this community energy to, to really move the dial on, on where Eau Claire is at with its welcoming ness to, to all people. And you're, you're right, so the plan gets, gets adopted, you know, now in the spring. And, you know, the, the intent is to not change it when it, but, but you're absolutely right, it, it actually officially gets, you know, adopted and rolled into the tax levy in November. And so the, the expectation is that there's minimal or no change to it so that, you know, staff has the ability to move forward knowing, you know, that, that it's there and, and that's what we work with. So, that said though, we could build into the, you know, the task force and, you know, the community engagement, and we could try to have, you know, some component of that engagement and that conversation. And, you know, once we've got, once we've got the structure in place and, and the, and the people in place and the conversation's going, you know, it, it's, it's possible that we could have a part of that, or one, one, one piece of that could be, you know, a conversation about, you know, interacting. Because one of the sectors we want to explore is government. And again, not just for the city of Eau Claire, but, you know, all of the local governments, and how do the local governments interact with, and, you know, is there any structural issues that we need to address? And, and part of that conversation, I would assume, would, would encompass the way in which we collect information and the way we have our, our processes. And so, you know, we could try out some of that or some of those ideas, you know, with, with this, you know, the CIP that is, that's before you now.
May I just have one more comment?
Sure.
Thank you. I just, I just want to share that I think it is really important that we move forward with adopting our CIP aspect in two weeks. And if there's a way for, you know, conversation to happen, I, I certainly would support that. I also think that this is gonna be years and decades-long work, and I just don't want us to be sloppy about it or cramming things in when it's not perhaps yielding a meaningful outcome. And, and that's what we want, is meaningful change. So again, I, I would be supportive if there was a conversation, maybe councilmembers who are able to put, you know, put their schedules together and, you know, maybe host a, you know, WebEx listening session or open house or, you know, dialogues over WebEx. And I think it's important that we continue to move forward on our timeframe.
I appreciate that, that comment and the feedback. And I agree that we, we want to be very intentional about putting our work together in a way that can have, you know, a real, meaningful and lasting impact on the community.
Councilmember Zhang.
You, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Peters. I wanna, and, well, and thank you, Councilmember Worthman, for bringing that up. I just wanted to express my, my thoughts on, I, I appreciate an open discussion, especially with how, you know, how many unexpected things have been thrown at us this year. And given the fact that we almost have multiple things on our plate, I really have, I'd like to have that open discussion in regards to, you know, all the requests that we've been having. Maybe, I guess, we shouldn't delay the CIP, but then it's still a conversation I think council should have a meaningful conversation about and put intentional, an intentional plan together for, for us to create solutions that is going to meet the long-term needs. So, just my thoughts on that. I'd be willing to make my schedule available.
Councilmember Christoffersen.
Thank you, Council President Weld. I just want to say that I think that engaging the public in unofficial conversations also have a lot of merit. I think that part of, there would be no reason why we couldn't, in a conversational way, talk about our experience in the CIP and allow people to access documents and have a conversation without offering the opportunity for them to vote. But I think it's all part of a education process that allows people to say, oh, well, then I guess I want something different, or I think that the conversational arc would take a different turn. So conversations like we're having tonight, wondering, you know, when to adopt the CIP, doesn't prevent us from going home and emailing people that we know in the public and say, you know, I'd like to have a Zoom meeting and let's talk about this thing and schedule a. It allows the government to maintain its schedule while we educate the public to intersect with discussions. So I, I just want to put that on the table, that we certainly have the ability to be the access point for the public, and I think we actually should use that.
Any other discussion? City Manager Peters, do we have a clear understanding? Okay. All right. Any other discussion from Mr. Windsor Zenz, or any other comments, Jay, or?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Actually, I have one more. Could I ask one more question?
Sure.
Thank you. I, I'm just wondering on that Water Street Tid, if there is any official conversation since we entered that agreement with the property owners there, so that the money flowing into that project is different? Is, is that gonna change our overall plan, or will that be changed? Is that an understandable question?
Which, which project are you, are you, are you referencing, Councilmember?
The Water Street Tid?
And the door.
Yes.
Because there was to be money for development for affordable housing in the Randal Park, and that kind of went off. So I'm just wondering if, if that's ever coming back onto the table?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's certainly part of, a part of the project plan. You know, a lot of those plans have been, have been kind of put on hold with the, with the, with the objection to, to the, I guess, the assessed value or the taxability of the property in the 200 block of Water Street. Now, that's been resolved, but, you know, at, at, at a level where the district is not generating as much, as much revenue as, as was anticipated in the project plan. So, again, we're, you know, there's, there's not, there are not nearly the funds available for affordable housing or any of the other projects in the district that were, were contemplated in the, when the, that project plan was developed. So we're hoping that there'll be some additional development occurring within the district. There, you know, have been, you know, some projects talked about, there's, are some projects under construction right now. So we hope that, you know, in the future, that those funds will be available for not only the, the affordable housing component of, of that project plan, but those other capital projects outlined in the CIP.
Maybe building on that just a little bit. So with that settlement agreement, that payment doesn't technically flow into the Tid, you know, as an incremental, but we are taking that payment and we are applying it to the Tid, so it will be available in the overall picture.
Councilmember Gregor.
Thank you, President Weld. So, Mr. Windsor Zenz, going back to Tid number twelve or continuing that conversation, you know, I, I know very few of us on council were around and that was created, even though I think it was probably just a little bit before I surged on council, but the, I guess I'm concerned about the, you know, some of the priorities within the, within the project plan for Tid number twelve. I have it up right now, but I, we can dive into it more maybe in a separate conversation. But the parking lot, which is the third item, comes in at a cost of $2.4 but, the parking lot, which is the third item, and comes in at a cost of 2.4 million dollars, that's the one that's proposed for behind the 400 block of Water Street on the Chippewa Street side, and essentially what it looks like is the proposal is to, to purchase and demolish, um, some, not all of the houses on that, on that south-sided, the 400 block of Chippewa Street, in order to provide more off-street parking for Water Street, is that, is that the understanding with, with that money?
That's what was contemplated in the project plan, yes.
Okay, so if I have an issue with that, um, like, how do I, I mean, see, that's not for a while into our CIP, like, I guess I'd like to talk about, like, how maybe some of those priorities can change, and maybe how this project plan could even be amended at some point down the road, but, um, that's kind of a whole, whole big topic, but I just thought I'd raise that as a concern at this point.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I appreciate that, be happy to have a, have a discussion, um, you know, with, with you, um, there's really no need to amend the project plan, because it's exactly that, um, no dollars have been appropriated for any one of those projects, every single one of those projects would have to come back to the city council for, uh, for appropriation of funds as well as approval of the project, so, um, you know, you know, none, none of those projects are, are moving forward on any, uh, uh, particular timeframe at this point.
Yeah, is there a, a reason why the, everything is in that 2025, is it because it's so up in the air?
Yes, exactly, so it's just kind of a placeholder at this point, and making sure it's just kind of on people's, uh, radars that those, uh, projects are planned, but I, I would be very surprised, uh, if those two projects that are in, in 2025 in the CIP actually occur in that year.
So they, they would be more likely to occur later, in other words?
Yeah, simply because we're not gonna have, we're not gonna have the, uh, the increment within that district, uh, unless there are some significant developments that occur between now and 2025.
Okay, all right, thanks, thanks a lot.
Any other discussion, questions? I don't see any, thank you, everybody, thank you, Jay, and Dale, and Carrie, and Kathy, and everybody else.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Windsor.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
All right, good night.